You can go ahead.
I call this meeting to order.
Go ahead.
We stand for the flag.
Good job. Go ahead. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the very public from which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thanks, guys.
What's the next one you're going to propose?
Whenever you invite me. All right. Ooh, there's a lot of stuff. All right. Good evening, everybody. Um, let's see. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Got a motion by Councilmember Porchman.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember Welch. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, up next is community comment. Uh, presenters are welcome to address the city council for up to five minutes on matters that are not listed on tonight's agenda. Specific requests for information may not immediately be available, in which case, follow-up will occur with the presenter sometime after the meeting. The city council should not be expected to immediately act on requests. However, we will follow up accordingly and may schedule items for future consideration. With that, is anybody here for anything that is not on tonight's agenda? Going once, going twice? All right. Uh, we got some fun stuff to start off the meeting. Up, uh, first item number 5.1 is the Greg Osterdike Community Service Award. Come on up. Oops. And Lori. Sid, do you want to come up? You can pull up your chair from the front.
She can stand.
Or you can stand there awkwardly. All right. Um, for those of you who aren't aware, the Greg Osterdike Community Service Award is named after Greg Osterdike, who was the former mayor of Carver. Shortly after Greg's death in 2019, we started thinking about a way that we could honor Greg's memory that was in line with his many contributions to the city of Carver and our larger community. The decision was then made to rename the Community Service Award after Greg, which I still think is just the perfect way to honor his memory. Community service was a very important part of who Greg was. Greg was the mayor of the city of Carver from 2011 to 2014. He was also a lion. He served on the Saints Foundation at St. Francis Hospital. He was very involved with Guardian Angels, Catholic Church, and so much more. The city of Carver is a better place because of Greg's many contributions. The winner of the 2023 Greg Osterdike Community Service Award is a tremendous representation of Greg's outstanding and selfless service to our community. It is now my pleasure to welcome back Lori Osterdike to Carver. Greg's wife will tell you more about our winner.
The winner of the 2023 Greg Osterdike Community Service Award is Joy McKnight. Joy is someone all of us in this room know. She most recently served the city of Carver on city council from 2019 to 2023. Before that, she served on the planning commission for close to two decades from 2000 to 2018. Joy spent countless hours of thoughtful review and consideration of issues which will positively impact the community for generations. She always came to meetings prepared and asked smart and thoughtful questions. Joy's work on behalf of the city was selfless, and we never doubted she had the best interests of the city of Carver in mind. I don't think many of us realize what an important role Joy played in shaping Carver into the community it is today. Congratulations, Joy, and thank you so much for everything you've done for our community.
Do you have to make a speech to a?
Oh, gosh, no.
All right, well, let's get a picture, though.
All right, sounds good.
All right, up next, we have the 2023 Employee of the Year Awards. Mr. Merrick?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, community members. Uh, happy to, uh, announce and award the Employee of the Year Award. One of the best parts of both this award is it's, uh, the winners are nominated by their colleagues. And so, um, the full-time, uh, award goes to Russell Kerber, uh, Public Services Technician Two. Uh, some of the nominations for Russell in the nomination. Uh, great attitude every time I see Russ, willingness to help with any project when asked. Another one reads, he's always friendly and helpful and was especially reassuring to patient with meter read issues that came along with utility billing switch to BSNA. And finally, his attention to detail and his willingness to work through any type of situation. And is one of the most mechanically gifted people I have ever worked with. Uh, please join me in congratulating Russ Kerber on Employee of the Year.
You like, look like you want to make a speech, right? All right, let's take a break.
And then for the, uh, part-time award, uh, want to recognize, uh, Captain Chad Roush. Uh, nominations for Chad included, Chad has been instrumental in coordinating training opportunities for the fire department this past year. Beyond that, he is willing to stay and help anyone who asks for a little more time on our fire calls. He's never looked annoyed or too busy to contribute. I need some tips, so. Chad has been instrumental in coordinating training opportunities for the department. Beyond that, he's always willing to stay and help others. And then finally, Chad is willing to help and do that little bit extra to support others on the team. So please help me in congratulating Chad Roush.
You want to make an acceptance speech, Chad?
No.
You have that annoyed look. Especially for the annoyed look. I like to mask it out myself.
No, it's okay.
You can stand over there and take one.
Chad, have you seen a special guest came to surprise you?
Yeah.
Come on. Do you want to arc your phone to somebody? Yeah.
Are there any others?
We can get out and maybe have your family come up. We can arm hug them there.
Just one.
Do you want us to enter up? Yeah, like your family. All right, up next, we've got the Recognition of Service Awards. Big night for awards in city.
Yeah. So it's Ken, where's Ken? Is Ken here?
Yeah. Ken Johnson, going once.
Come on down.
There he is. Should we announce them all and then do pictures?
I'll do a little ditty.
Okay.
That's what the kids, that's what the kids say.
Ken?
So, uh, we'll start with Ken. Uh, Ken, we're celebrating, uh, five years of service for Ken Johnson. Uh, a great thing to know about Ken is his persistence. Before Ken was actually on the department, he was volunteering for the fire department on, on different events, just showing how much he wanted to support the community. So, uh, thank you for your five years of service, Ken. Picture time.
A picture, oh, okay.
Or do you want me to do all?
Maybe we should do them all and then we'll just.
All right.
We don't have to keep getting up and downs.
Sorry. We're going to streamline this here. You can stand there.
Uh, our second award goes to, uh, Tim Walsh for 10 years of service. Where's Tim? So Tim is a consummate leader and professional in our department. We, he's heavily relied on, and I can't think of anyone I'd rather get, uh, advice from when it comes to difficult situations. Tim's always been, uh, there for me and others in a pinch. So thank you and congratulations, Tim. Uh, Bill. Bill Cochran. Uh, Bill has got one of the best senses of humor on the department. He's always good to keep kind of spirits up, and he's always been a really straight shooter with me. And I've always appreciated his feedback and what he's added to that department. So thanks, Bill, for your service. And last and certainly not least, where's, where's Danny? Dan Meyer, on 25 years of service. So Dan was the, the fire chief when I first started here. And so we've been through, uh, been through a lot and faced a lot of challenges. The, the one thing that I'll share with Dan that really resonates me that I would share with anybody, if, if I was in a situation where I needed help or my family needed help, and I saw Dan Meyer come up the driveway, I know we'd be taken care of. So thank you, Dan, for your service.
We can do whatever variation. All right. I have to say bye, Tim. I think you want anybody else in there?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up. Oh, sorry. Kristy, are you?
Good.
Good.
Thank you.
Congratulations. We can Photoshop pictures. Yep, see you later. Okay, thanks for coming, you guys. Um, all right, moving on, uh, we have no public hearings this evening. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Got a motion by Councilmember Welsh.
I'll second.
And a co, uh, second by Councilmember Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, uh, up to... Sorry, were you flagging me for something? Okay. No, okay, sorry. I just saw you out of the corner of my eye. Uh, 8.1, Budget and Tax Levy, Ms. Shitty.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. All right, tonight, we are at a very exciting point in the budget and levy discussion, where we will be hopefully adopting the 2024 Property Tax Levy and Budget. Um, so we began this process in May, and we continued it through the summer with many work sessions. Um, and we also looked at the long-term financial plan throughout that time. Um, so we're sitting here tonight after the truth and taxation that we had two weeks ago, um, which we actually had quite a bit of participation with, which was fun. And we're looking at a proposed 2024 levy of $4,381,674. Um, this levy includes a street maintenance levy, the debt service levy, as well as the general fund levy. Um, this is a 13.75% increase from the 2023 final levy. Um, and then, moving on to the budget, uh, we are looking at the general fund budget. We want to have a balanced budget when we're looking at the general fund. So we're looking at just a little bit over a $4 million revenue and expense for the general fund. And then I also laid out the enterprise, which you will also be adopting tonight as well. Um, so I have the water, sewer, and storm. There's detail laid out behind, um, the memo for you. Just to highlight some of the, um, primary budget and tax levy drivers for the general fund, we have $75,000 budgeted for capital improvements, um, $100,000 in additional street maintenance, as this is the third year that we will be doing that in the pavement management plan, approximately $140,000 increase in wages, um, for 2024, $50,000 increase in fire emergency wages and training, and, um, $44,000 increase in the law enforcement contract. And we are hiring one new full-time employee. Um, with that being said, we have two, um, resolutions that we need to adopt tonight. One is for the property tax levy and one is for the budget. I'm here to answer any questions that you have. I know that, that we've had extensive, um, discussions on this, but again, any questions that you have, I'm happy to answer.
All right, any questions? Eric, are you, so this was a high level. I assume that this is what you're here for?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and I don't mean to call you out, but we, um, our truth and taxation public hearing was two weeks ago. That was the date that was on your property tax statement, and Lynn went through everything in detail. Would you like to see that tonight?
No.
Okay. Yeah, it's not a waste of time. If you want, we can, but it's also available online, so. And I think, okay, we, up until solid handful of years ago, we always used to do tra, truth and taxation and then acceptance, passing of the, the budget in the same night. Few years ago, we started doing it in separate nights, so that we could hear from folks and take that feedback, um, and then potentially make changes in the two weeks' time between those meetings. So we've separated those out. But tonight, this is the budget that we've heard about since June-ish. Um, so I always kind of explain generally to an empty room that like if our eyes glaze over a little bit, it's because we easily heard this presentation a half a dozen times. So, just want to, do you have any questions? Okay. And again, I'm sorry to, I don't mean to single you out, but you came, and I appreciate you taking the time to, to be here tonight. All right. Um, Council, questions, comments left? Or a motion?
Okay, I'll, I'll, I just have a couple of comments.
Yeah.
We know, we did have a number of residents here last, um, meeting, um, with good reason. Um, and I'm happy to see that people are paying attention. Um, unfortunately, truth and taxation, people are not generally stopping by because they want to applaud it. Um, they're here because they want, one, more information, but two, um, they're oftentimes not, not happy with it. Um, this is, and again, speaking for myself, this is a very large percentage. Um, when you look at our previous years and, um, especially considering the economy right now. We have a growing city. Growth is tough. Um, I have done this in a previous career when I was in City of Victoria. That city was the exact same size as we are now and growing. And I, this is like Groundhog's Day. I feel like, that I went through this already. Um, and I understand it, it was hard then, and it's just as hard here. Um, I, I want to, as we move forward, make sure that we pay attention, that the city does not become somewhere that can only be, um, inhabited and have residents who are either the very wealthy or the subsidized. Uh, there's a, a large middle class that I think that, um, we should always be cognizant of, and I'm not trying to say that the council is not, but I think for myself, that is something that I really want to pay attention to as we're moving forward beyond this year into the next year's budgeting. Whoops, I just, there was a train of thought here that just snuck away for a second. Um, this is large, let's see, so as we were talking about this... Oh, where did that little thought go? Sorry. Victoria? Oh, the needs and wants. So obviously, as a growing city, um, there's needs that are, we have to do this. We have to have water, we have to have street spouts. There's things that are also wants. Um, but there's also an expectation from residents what those needs and wants are. And I think that there's maybe some work to be done to, um, with the community to say, okay, we've heard you, but here's what you're giving up. If, if, if you want it this way, here are the things we can't do because we don't have the, the base to, of, of dollars to do it with. Um, and that's a hard conversation to have back and forth, to say, okay, you want this, but is that a need or a want? And then also, how do we fund that? So do we do it a little bit less while we're getting larger? Or do we say, no, we have a higher expectation, and this is what it costs? And that's a really hard balance. This has been a tough budget for, uh, me to go through. Um, and I know, and we have worked really hard on it. It has come down from initially what was brought to us. We did work on that. That doesn't mean by saying that, that it, we, we still don't have the understanding that it's 13.75%. I just wanted to add a few of those comments in, um, so that anyone watching or anyone who, who sees us go through this process doesn't think that it's something we just throw some numbers on paper and, and just get moving. Um, there's a lot of deliberation, and there's a lot of thought that goes into this. And again, it's some of those wants and some of those needs that we have to mix together, that we have to find our best way to fund. So with that, I will stop my comments.
All right, anybody else?
I will add some commentary to that, too. This could have been much higher. Uh, 13.75 was after a lot of work to look at closely and, uh, very consciously what we could minimize to keep that tax rate down. So, uh, for folks that are listening, uh, or watching, uh, this is coming in after a, a year of dramatic inflation. I want to applaud everyone in the city, uh, that worked on this, that really looked at every corner we could, um, we could massage to bring the number down to 13.75. So that is, um, that's deliberate work. And I want to make sure that that's recognized. And, um, well, I don't think I can add anymore to, uh, um, to Councilmember Christie's commentary, uh, other than the, the recognition. Thank you.
All right, anything from you?
Just mostly that, I appreciate the staff's effort to, this summer, already start to present things to us, so that we have plenty of time to look at options and, and come up with a budget that balanced, um, put, kept our priorities where we needed them. So, thank you.
Yeah, um, I just echo everyone else's comments, real good work by staff. And then I just had one, again, quick question for people looking online. Uh, what was our, like, percentage of population increase from this year to last year? Do we know off the top of our head, or how many, or rough estimate? Okay.
Yeah, the, we get population estimates, so we get the, the census numbers every 10 years.
Ah.
A few years delayed after the census, but then the, my council gives us population estimates. The number I think, though, that Brent's going to pull up are always a year delayed.
No, that's okay, okay. Well, I guess it go, echoes into the fact that we're a growing community, right? So we do have increasing expenses, and not all of the expenses can be, uh, you know, distributed over all the residents, right? You have to kind of get things early to allow for the growth, so, but, um, yeah.
Right.
That's all right, don't worry about it.
Okay. Um, while Brent's looking that up, I, Kristy, you hit on the needs and wants. And I think every year that we've been on council, we start off doing this process, and we talk about, we want a lean budget that includes needs. We're not a community of wants. So, um, I am happy with this budget, but, you know, needs, I think, is different through the lens that you view it, right? If we did away with Spring Cleanup Day, there would be rioting in the streets, right? We've unfortunately gone through a period where Southwest Prime went away for a fraction of time, and we heard that that's not acceptable in our community. So these things cost money. Cleanup Day is $34,000, Prime is $45,000. Um, so these are the kinds of investments, and these are the kinds of needs that we need for our community. This is a, a higher increase, I, I realize that. But I think that we give plenty of opportunity for folks to come and to provide feedback. Uh, when we had our truth and taxation hearing two weeks ago, I didn't necessarily hear from anybody that night of like, strike the police contract, take out this line item, you know, like, let's, why do we need a spring cleanup day? I think there was a lot of issues, and I'm glad that we are kind of reacting, um, about the valuation notices and kind of questions about, how has the valuation come to? What impact does that have on my taxes? So that was the majority of folks. We did get an email from somebody who had issues with the overall budget, but, um, that was kind of the one person that we, we heard from. And then this is our, I think it needs to be said, that this is our, our first budget under the new strategic plan. And with all of the kind of north stars, if you will, that are in that budget and the financial goals, you know, the financial goals are an entire section of our strategic plan. So it is cool to see that come a full circle and us to really lean in to that plan and have a budget aligned with that. So, um, that, Mr. Merrick, 33.3%.
I could see you doing math over there, Brent, and trying to.
No, I said Lynn, you do it. Don't make fun of me.
It was about a nine, nine percent growth, from 5,850 people to 6,371.
And that's 2021 to 2022, because the.
It's always a year.
A year behind.
Behind, yeah. Okay. All right, thank you.
I'll make a motion, uh, to adopt Resolution 158-23, certifying the 2024 Property Tax Levy in the amount of $4,381,674.
Motion by Councilmember Sarah.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember Welsh. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
All right, I'll move to adopt, uh, Resolution 159-23 approving the 2024 budget.
I'll second.
Got a motion, Councilmember Welsh, a second by Councilmember Porchman. Any further discussion? All those in, uh, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Lynn, especially for all your work on that and Brent, and everybody, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to communications. Mr. Merrick, anything from you?
Uh, nothing specifically. I just publicly want to thank everybody on the, the team. Uh, nothing specifically, I just publicly want to thank everybody on the, the team. You know, there's ups and downs and highs and lows and opportunities and challenges, um, but we've got a great team here to work through all those things and just thankful for our team and what they contribute to, for the things that are seen and unseen, and thanks for the council's leadership on a great year. See you next year.
Thank you. All right, why don't we start on this side? Reed, council updates?
Uh, nothing for me.
Christie?
Uh, HPC was canceled this month, so we didn't have anything there, which is not surprising. It's winter months, we don't tend to see a whole lot. Um, uh, we have, the soggy bottom is coming up. I'm sure people are watching right now, but if you have a nomination...
Could potentially be soggy.
Um, if you have, um, anybody you would like to nominate as a recipient, um, I'm going to leave it open till noon tomorrow. It's on our Facebook page, so you can go there, scroll down, you'll find, should be one of the last posts on there, there's a link there, you can nominate somebody for the soggy bottom to be your recipient. That's all I have.
All right.
I haven't had any meetings, um, otherwise just a, a happy holidays, um, our local school district, Eastern Carver County's. Last day's school's Wednesday, so if the weather stays nice, I think we're gonna see a lot more, uh, kids outside. But otherwise, um, thank you everyone for a good year.
Eric?
Uh, so I attended the planning commission meeting, and that was the preliminary plat for Carver Place, uh, the additional 60 units, uh, coming in for that, and we discussed this in our work session. What was not lost on me in that meeting is the last time we were on, we were Carver Crossing, we had a lot of resident concern, a lot of angst over it, uh, and, uh, certainly a packed house, uh, of concerned residents. In this meeting, we had none, and I think that is a testimony to the ultimate reception of Carver Crossing and the value that brought to the community. So I'm, I'm really looking forward to the, to the next phase, and this was also brought in the, the work session, but Carver Oaks is moving forward. It won't be a combined, uh, building, that was one of the original design concepts, but because of how the, uh, the money came in, they're gonna be separately constructed units, not attached. Is it 40, how many, 43, uh, senior living, uh, residents there?
Eric, can I ask you a question? I mean, I didn't catch it. So none of those buildings will be attached?
So the, the 60 units are, are obviously one building. That's getting shifted down the property a little further than it was.
Okay.
And then the senior home will be a separate building, so it'll, I think it'll still kind of look like an L with the space in between it.
But they will be separated?
They will be separated. The other just was no way to, to start one and then hold off because of the way the money comes in. And I had asked that question, but, uh, unfortunately that ship has sailed, uh, the way the, the money's structured.
So we'll, and, and this is just out of curiosity, I don't expect that you would know their man, but will one, they have a management office in, in Carver Crossing, will they just have one management office, or are they all three gonna have them?
Well, it's a different company.
Do you know? Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, so there was a question about that, uh, how, how it will be staffed, and it's five to eight hours, five days a week of start, and then five to eight hours, three days per week, uh, when it reaches maximum capacity.
Okay.
But different company.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Did I lie?
You don't, Jack.
Ultimate truth seller. All right, uh, thanks, Eric.
Oh, I did, uh, attend the Southwest Transit meeting, but that was, the meeting and holiday party were right ahead of the planning commission, so I was only able to attend, uh, for the mission statement and vision statement, uh, part of the Southwest Transit meeting, so I'm looking for some updates on what it was, I'll pass that on, if there's anything relevant.
Thank you for trying to be in two places at once. I've done that, I know it's not easy. Let me know if you figure out a solution to that. Um, for me, in the last couple of weeks, uh, we had a Carver County Leaders Meeting on Friday, December 8th. Um, just as a reminder, that's the city managers and, uh, mayors of all four of the communities in the school district and then, um, some county folks as well. Um, that was just a few days after the Carver, Eastern Carver County School Superintendent, Dr. Lisa Sales-Adams, um, had been selected by Minneapolis Public Schools as their new superintendent. Um, at that point, she didn't know when the transition was gonna be. Since that time, um, the Assistant Superintendent, Erin Rathke, is that her last name? Um, has been appointed by the school board as the interim. They are gonna be engaging a search firm to look for a new superintendent, and I think, do you know off the top of your head when Dr. Sales-Adams' last day is? It's sometime in January, so she's down to, to weeks left, but, um, Erin's great, she's been at a few of our meetings, and I think that the school district, um, has a solid plan forward in the interim. Uh, let's see, uh, the Carver Holiday Market was December 10th. That is kind of, um, a little bit of an extenuation of our partnership with the Southwest, uh, Metro Chamber, where they did an event on a Sunday afternoon, and I wasn't sure, I don't think it was on a Sunday last year, but it was busy, all the vendors were happy, were selling things, um, really cool, kind of essentially a craft fair, but more than that. There were some folks selling cookies, there were some folks selling dog treats, just a really fun event that was held, uh, down in Village Hall. Um, the Red Cross Blood Drive from the Lions was, uh, last Wednesday, last Tuesday, December 12th. Um, so I think they do those quarterly, so always a, a good event. Um, I had a League of Minnesota Cities Board Meeting last Friday on December 14th, uh, I'm sorry, that was Thursday. Um, also last Thursday was Shop with a Hero, which, um, Fleet Farm, um, is always very, very generous, and they gave $500 worth of gifts and toys away. I think we had a total of seven kids that split up that money, and they were able to get a bunch of stuff. So, um, the Carver Fire participated, and then Joey from the Carver County Sheriff's Department helped out. So there are pictures on, on Facebook of these little itty-bitty kids pushing the carts and, you know, their hero, trying to figure out and do the math and make sure they don't go over their allotment, um, and then I always attend and help wrap the gifts at the end, which is one of my favorite things. Um, let's see, and then, um, we had a, uh, Business Alliance meeting last Friday. So, um, still getting a really good turnout from there. We got an update, uh, from Hometown Bank. They are thrilled to be seeing their building being put up, kind of piece by piece, as you're seeing, um, and they are working on kind of market warming activities. They told us that, um, between the branch manager, I'm not sure what Kim's role is, maybe assistant branch manager, um, they are working on writing, handwriting postcards to every address in the city of Carver, just kind of saying like, hey, we're coming to Carver and we're looking forward to meeting you, which just really seems...
It hurts my hand.
I just, we just did Christmas cards.
We were talking about that, and the chiropractor was there, and we're like, maybe you guys need a business partnership, because, yeah, uh, but just, they're going the extra mile, and I've been impressed with, you know, how they're working to kind of warm this market literally before they have a presence here.
I have my coupons, they're mailed to me.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm one of those.
Um, and then, um, I also want to acknowledge, um, the Water Resources Team, I think just did an excellent job. We, um, you know, at the last meeting, I said, you know, if you see something, report it, report it, report it. Well, they folks did, and that is great because that's exactly what we need from our residents. We need that partnership, we need those advocates saying it, because for whatever reason, sometimes when we say it, it doesn't work, but when we have the community members who are beating that drum, it helps, and that's what happened. So, um, the Water Ser- Resources Team, which, uh, a lot of folks who are sitting in this room on the other side of the dais we're part of, um, put in a lot of time last week doing that. For anybody who's watching tonight, we talked about it in length during our work session which preceded this, which, uh, that video will go live tomorrow morning, there's information in the packet for that as well, but just a huge kudos for that because that was a lift. Um, and we'll continue to be continuing work, and we'll probably continue to be a lift, but I just think it's important, um, for anybody watching this or hearing this to know that this is something we're committed to getting figured out and we'll be working on it. We're not checking that box quite yet, so. Um, and then, this is our last meeting of 2023, so I just wish everybody a happy holidays and hopefully everybody has some time to relax, recharge, and... That and entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Councilmember Pritchman and a second by Councilmember Mock. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Good evening.